Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at four oh two. Um, everyone receive the minutes from the April eighth meeting. We have an approval to, I mean, a motion to approve.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? So. The statistical reports. Yeah, you wanna read your statement first?
Would all, everyone stand with me for a moment of silence, please? This is a moment of silence for the well buing feeling being of all residents of Allegheny County, especially those in Midland, Bonaconing, and Westernport. And for all those individuals who are helping them. Thank you. Now I'm gonna read my opening statement. The library board and trustees would like to acknowledge the collaborative efforts of both the staff and board members during this current budgetary crisis. Our primary focus remains on keeping all branches open. Uh, with operation, let's start again. All, our primary focus remains on keeping all library branches operational despite financial challenges. The board recognizes that the solutions they've been developed represent necessary compromises that may not satisfy everyone, but would please the majority. While we welcome you, please be respectful, we know you. And allow us, make sure the speakers adhere to the established protocols of time so that all members of our community can be heard. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm happy to respond first here to the Amanda Allen County Library System, April twenty twenty five statistical report. Uh, the key highlight this month on your services overview there is the significant increase in physical circulation across the entire library system. Every branch saw growth in the number of physical items checked out compared to April of last year. Uh, the increase ranged from forty-two percent at the Georgia Street Library to seventeen percent at the Frostburg Library. This strong upward trend is a clear indicator of the growing community engagement of their physical collection. Uh, the digital resources continues to grow as well as the past several months. Um, years really, uh, with physical, digital checkout, sorry, uh, of ten percent compared to this time last year. In April, we offered two hundred and fifteen programs across the library, reached a total of four thousand two hundred and seventy attendees, not counting our in-branch engagement activities like answering the whiteboard questions or mini scavenger matches that the staff did on for, um, our patrons. The children's programs remain a popular program, accounting for over forty percent of our total attendance. We also saw a growth in participation in author and book discussions as well as um, increased attendance at health and wellness programs. We started vaccine clinics that cycle through this, uh, this season as well as, um, some other, our, our yoga is ever popular, and this indicates a well-rounded first offer. Our technology services also continue to see consistent use of about fifteen hundred public computer sessions by five sessions last month. Uh, looking at our visitor usage, um, the number of patrons throughout the invisible material um, and using public technology has remained relatively stable in the past six months. Um, but we have observed a notable increase in the percentage of visitors attending the programs over the past months. Um, the suggested programming, uh, is becoming an even more significant driver of library visits. Uh, we issued two hundred and sixty-nine new library cards in April, and our visitor counts, uh, showed overall slight decline compared to April of last year. Uh, but again, if you remember last year, we were handing out program computers in April, so um, this does not surprise us, but we're beginning to see that gradual increase as we transition out of winter and spring into those summer months, and we anticipate seeing that trend continue. And on the back of your summary there in your folders, uh, you'll find some great photos of our engagement programs that we had over the past month. Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Financial?
Hello. Uh, I have just a few brief remarks related to the April twenty twenty-five financial reports. On the income side, we had sixteen hundred seventy-three dollars in fund fees, two hundred and twenty-one dollars in copier, and seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars in printing income. There was a lot of activity in gifts and memorials income. We received a total of seventy-seven hundred sixty-five dollars in donations. This included a lot of sponsorship for the summer with our library events across the library system, including two thousand dollars from American Insurance, four thousand dollars from Damon Rosen's way on behalf of Wheels Up and Western Maryland Gymnastics, five hundred dollars each from Tech Masters Karate and LaVale Civic Improvement Association, two hundred and fifty dollars from First Peoples Federal Credit Union, and one hundred dollars each from the MetSpurs, Betty Manning, Praise United Methodist Women's Society. Thanks to all of our sponsors and a shout out to Ashley, Shay, and Kate and their teams for working hard to plan and fund these fun summer programs. On the expenses side, in programming and after supplies, we spent fifteen hundred and ninety-two dollars for children's programs and branch programs, including a candle making event, a wreath making event, and prizes for a poetry contest. We spent twelve thousand dollars in library materials, including books, audio books. And finally, as far as gifts and memorials expenses, on the collections side, there was two hundred and eight dollars spent for books with several gifts, and on the programming supply, uh, on the programming side, there was four hundred and ninety-four dollars spent on programming supplies. Are there any questions about the financial reports? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we get a motion to approve statistical? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I didn't hear it. I'll stay and I apologize. I was in Luke, Maryland, today, meeting with the superintendent of schools. I completely lost control.
You're fine. Bill. Sue. Okay, we're gonna switch unfinished business with new business, so we're gonna do unfinished business first. Hours of operation and FY twenty-six.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna get our technology so that everybody can see the proposed hours of operation, starting on July one. As soon as it warms up, I see it slowly coming around. Sure.
I also wanted, um, let everyone know that, um, when we discuss the operating budget, we're gonna have another public comment section at that time, and then another public comment section at the end after new business.
All right, thank you all. Um, so what we've done, um, is we have worked, um, with the board's guidance to find a way to keep all the branches, all six locations, open to maximize the number of hours open, to maximize the, uh, number of busiest hours that are open. So what we've got here, uh, is our proposed hours of operation for fiscal twenty-six. It shows that, one, um, there are service reductions across all six locations. But we all share a little bit of, a little bit of pain there. Uh, in essence, each library loses one day of service. So for those libraries open six days a week, it's five days. For those libraries open four days a week, it's three days. What you'll see at the George's Creek and Westernport branches is that they are open on alternate days, and that does a number of things for us. First of all, it provides library service along Route thirty-six, six days a week. It also allows the Westernport Library to be open on Fridays, which it is not currently open on Fridays. And a helpful suggestion from Mayor Coburn, uh, says that, uh, on Saturdays, the George's Creek Library should be open for all the visitors to the Lefty Grove Park. So we tried to accommodate all the activities that go on in those communities. So that's why those hours are staggered, and it also allows us to minimize the number of staff so that, uh, since they're open, not at the same time. Um, you'll also notice that at the Frostburg, South Cumberland, and Washington Street location, well, actually at all the locations with the exception of LaVale, is we've moved, uh, to a ten to six schedule. And as I mentioned, uh, that typically covers the busiest hours. We've got our morning programs for the kids, and then at six P M., uh, attendance or visits to libraries really drops off. So we've got eight hours those days instead of seven, which we currently have. So that is our, uh, proposal at this point, to, uh, continue operating at all locations and try to, uh, continue to have as much access to library services and resources as possible across the county.
Questions? Is a question?
Want me to jump to health insurance? All right, I will jump to health insurance. All right. The, the health insurance line is so busy, it's not gonna show well anyway, so I apologize. There's nothing to put on the big screen right now. Um. So what we've got is the, um, currently, the library employees and the library system is piggybacking off of the county government's health insurance program. Uh, this year, the county health insurance program is looking to increase its cost by about sixteen point one percent. So that would mean the library system would have to spend, uh, currently, we're spending two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, combined with their sixteen percent increase and the number of new enrollees in the library's health insurance program, we would have to go to three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars per year. So we cannot afford that. So what we've done is we've worked with Blue Risk Risk Managers to find comparable plans, uh, that are, uh, that the library can afford and offer the best coverage or the most similar coverage to what our employees currently get through the county. What we found is a Care First Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Blue Preferred PPO Gold Plan, which is very similar to what the county offers. It'll be nice because we're currently on Care First, so most of our employees are already logged into the portal. Um, uh, they'll be able to log into the portal as they do now, so we minimize the number of disruptions that they'll have to go through to, uh, to accommodate the new, uh, health insurance plan. One of the challenges is that costs still went up about, um, went up a little bit. So as part of this transition, um, we are looking at our health insurance costs going up from two hundred and forty-four thousand this year to two hundred and fifty-three thousand in fiscal twenty-six. So in, uh, to try and pay for a portion of that increase in our tight budget year, non-exempt library staff are being asked to contribute, uh, an increase from five percent of their monthly premium to six percent of their monthly premium. Exempt staff will see their monthly contribution rise from five percent to eight percent. So for those non-exempt library staff, the monthly deduction will rise from fifty dollars to fifty-six dollars per month. Exempt staff will see their monthly deduction increase from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars per month. Working with, um, Blue Ridge Risk Partners, this is our best plan that we can afford and offers the most comparable health insurance, uh, to our employees that we can match at this time for the budget that we have. I have additional handouts. I handed up four, but. Onto budget? To budget.
That question?
Question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we would want to go back with the county, would that be an option?
No. It would not be an option. They, uh, would, uh, they consider outside agencies such as the library system as an increase in their risk because if a library employee, uh, were to get injured, and since they're self-insured, they don't, uh, want to be on the hook for that. So if we leave, they are unlikely to bring, to allow us to come back.
And what is the percentage of from what we're paying now with the new company?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Yeah, the increase.
Oh, from two hundred and forty-four to two hundred and fifty-three? See what that is.
What is it? Yeah, I know it's nine thousand.
Two fifty-three minus two forty-four. Uh, it looks like it's about three point seven percent.
Yeah, the percent is sixty point one.
Correct.
More sure that the carry's going up.
Yes, and they have no plan changes, so they will not be changing anything within their plan. It's just a straight increase in cost for them.
John?
Yes, sir.
Is, is a, one of the major distinctions between the potential new program and the existing program that the deductible goes up a significant amount of money?
The deductible for employees will go up from, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars annually to eight hundred dollars annually. Um, the, per individuals, correct. Uh, the deductible for prescriptions will be the same at two, I believe, two hundred and fifty dollars, um, and then a lesser to generic, I believe.
So the increase in the deductible is not the pharmaceutical, it's a healthcare.
Correct.
Thank you.
And family gift from five hundred to sixteen hundred?
Well, that's current. Oh, yeah, you, yeah. Well, in, uh, the new plan, the individual is eight hundred, the family would go to sixteen hundred.
Currently, it's two fifteen, five hundred.
Correct. Again, part of the issue is not, it's, it's a two-part issue with the increase of, uh, going from two forty-four to three nineteen. The first part is the sixteen percent increase, and the second, uh, factor is the, we've had five new employees enroll in the library, uh, health insurance plan because they have, they've had, um, significant life events that allowed them to join the plan outside of the open, uh, registration site.
And even with them, it's only going up nine thousand dollars.
Oh, yes, their rate is going, um, the old rate was, uh, roughly nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for individuals. If you are a, uh, well, the new rate for individuals is nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. So there is savings, uh, on that level.
John?
Yes, sir.
Are we satisfied that the, uh, the broker, Blue Ridge, whatever it's called, we, both want to be satisfied, these are the only two options that we're aware of, attorney? Any other option out there?
Sure. Um, for this morning, I received a, um, an email from C-Biz, who currently is the broker for the county government. Um, they offered the exact same plan, um, but we believe that the Blue Ridge Risk Partners is a slightly better option for us because they, um, are a little more nimble. Um, we've gotten tripped up several times in the past with the bureaucracy inside of C-Biz, so we'd like to keep it as simple as possible by going with a firm that would give us more personal attention. But the rates were the same, so there was no real difference. It was just a matter of, uh, better service.
With the coverage to be the same, too?
Yeah.
Same deductible.
The same, exact same plans were offered by C-Biz as by Blue Ridge.
John, has the staff been, uh, brought, uh, seen this?
Not in a significant way, no. We've brought in several of the people in the leadership team that deal with the numbers and, uh, and our H R manager to sort of get this fall started. But it has not, this is the first time we've contemplated coming off of the county's health insurance, um, in the last fifteen years.
When does the decision have to be made? Like, when do we?
Um, currently, the county, um, has an open enrollment period now. Um, and that open enrollment period closes on the twenty-third, at the end of this week. So if we don't, um, make a decision, then all of our current employees will be enrolled in the exact same plan next year that they are in now.
We go on to the budget?
Yeah, we can. All right, let me put this on the big screen. Very good, all right. Shimming this up here. I think that's it. That's a summary sheet of our budget that we'll be talking about. So, um, we're very grateful that the county government found a way to provide the same amount of funding in the next fiscal year that they are providing in the current fiscal year. As noted previously, the updated hours of operation, um, the updated hours of operation that we talked about above, uh, the flat funding that they were able to provide for us uh, did not allow us to maintain the same hours of our current operation. Um, that is because of the cuts last year to the library's budget and, um, the reorganization that was necessary. However, it did open the door to provide us the opportunity to meet many of the priorities of our stakeholders. So as I said earlier, um, this budget that we have before us today allows all the library branches to stay open. There are shared service reductions across all six locations of the Allegheny County Library System. Each library loses one day of public service. The library system moves off the county health insurance as a way to save money, and it provides another initiative to, uh, fund the grants writer that was requested. Specific budget elements to make this happen is that three of seven part-time branch staff positions in public services arena. Uh, their contracts will not be renewed, starting July one. The Director of Human Resources position goes from thirty-five hours a week to twenty hours a week. The delivery driver will go from twenty hours per week to twelve hours per week. Uh, exempt employee contributions to health insurance will increase from five to eight percent. Non-exempt employee contributions to health insurance will increase from five percent to six percent. We've eliminated the annual bonuses. We've eliminated funding for individual memberships. We've eliminated funding for staff service awards. We've eliminated funding for three of the four cellphone accounts. Uh, those individuals identified, uh, by the Library Advisory Committee, those twelve staff identified by the Library Advisory Committee, uh, as making less than a livable wage, they are the only individuals employed by the library system that will be receiving a wage increase this year, and that will be at a five percent level. They will still not be at a livable wage. We have been given notice that there is a, uh, a gift coming to the LaVale Library. We intend to use that gift of twenty thousand dollars to fund a portion of the LaVale Library's collection budget. We have also identified using the logs and gift account and using thirty-one thousand of those dollars to support Frostburg materials, collections, DVDs, books, things like that. We've eliminated the South Cumberland Security Guard, and as the budget is standing above you, or before you right now, it is not initially funding the Westernport flood insurance. The Westernport flood insurance is not due for renewal again until February. So the plan of action is we're going to continue more vigorously searching for grants, savings, and other partners that would allow us to reinstate that flood insurance policy before it's due in February. It is not currently in the budget that would be approved July one. It terminates, um, supplemental water service, uh, for the Westernport and George's Creek Libraries, reduces the number of days of delivery from five days a week to three days a week, and it also, um, provides funding to contract, not hire an individual, but to contract, uh, a grants writer to work for us. As far as what's before you, uh, we've identified these priorities of the stakeholders, and we hope you agree that, uh, these priorities are being met. For the Westernport, George's Creek, and Washington Street Library communities, their libraries stay open. The library is open on Fridays in Westernport, and the library is open on Saturdays in the George's Creek area. For our active readers and our frequent library visitors, the ten to six hours allow us to maintain our busiest hours when people most visit the library. It also allows us to minimize the reduction to collections, even though materials available in one branch are available in all the branches. For the library staff as stakeholders, it allows us to have a little bit more buffer and improve our staff coverage. It is also the least disruptive to the established scheduling patterns of our staff. And as I said, with the five percent increase for those twelve individuals, it takes the initial steps to start addressing the livable wage concerns of the board and the Library Advisory Committee. For the library board, library administration, and library operations, this budget fills the gap in our budget left by liquidating the Ron Knipple gift that we received many years ago for fifty-six thousand dollars. It adjusts our ongoing operations to align with our current budget, and it establishes funding to begin, uh, in a vigorous way, our grant writing initiatives. Those are the end of my prepared remarks. Happy to field any questions or clarify, or slow down, or repeat even.
So John, if I understand, the current flood insurance for the Westernport Library?
Correct.
Is in effect until February twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
At that time, the policy, unless it's renewed, we no longer have flood insurance. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
The the savings we're looking at, if we discontinue that, is that we wouldn't be paying the premium after February?
Correct.
When is the premium? I know you told us.
We anticipate, uh, to renew in February of twenty twenty-six, it'll be at least twenty-three thousand dollars. It's, we paid twenty-one thousand dollars this year, but it seems to go up regularly significantly.
Is it anyone experienced up on, uh, I assume there's gonna be a a check written by the current insurance company for the loss of the Westernport. Do we have any intuition that would suggest that that will affect the premium going significantly higher after they write the check? Any, any insurance that's forth to you all in business?
And a claim plus a major flood like that is going to, uh, be remapped for plus one? So it's going to increase premiums everywhere in that area? So I think, well, there's a pretty good chance that the insurance.
And if I follow your comments on that, we're looking hopefully for an opportunity to find funding from other sources. Uh, perhaps from the citizens to help, if it's to help maintain insurance, given what just happened in the past week. That's our goal.
That is the goal, correct. There are several things on the horizon that may yield those funds that. That is the goal, correct. There are several things on the horizon that may yield those funds that we'll need. Um, none of those are, uh, bearing fruit at this moment.
Other question, and then I'll tell that. The, to make all this, yeah, I believe. To make the numbers come together, see, we're, um, accessing something called the Logston gift account, thirty-one thousand, and then on down sixteen-five for the, you can have some constant gift account.
Uh, we were able to eliminate, uh, taking anything from the Crusin account, so that sixteen thousand is, is staying in principle.
Okay, maybe you anticipate my next question. Once we use or exhaust the money in the Logston gift account, I don't need specifics, but do we have other gift accounts that when push comes to show, as I anticipate push is going to come to show years to come? Or we have exhausted, have we exhausted all the gift accounts or some we still?
The Logston account was given, uh, for the explicit use of the operation of the Frostburg Library. It currently has a balance of around a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. We do not want to be in a position to have to take thirty-one thousand dollars out each year until that's liquidated, like we had to do last year for the Knippel account. What I'm hoping is that, um, this one year will buy us, um, uh, another year until we have some staffing changes that will allow us to reallocate some of those funds so that we don't have to draw so heavily from that account.
Is that our kind of remaining bigger account balance?
Yes. Um, you can get a full list of the accounts, yes, at the, on the special accounts list there.
How is the flood affecting our budget? This year and then possibly next year?
Um, I'm gonna, well, the first thing is we paid our premium. So that, that money that was allocated last year, we paid for the, for that. Um, currently, um, that coverage means that we have about a half a million dollars for building repairs, and we have eighty-one thousand dollars for the contents. A good way to think about it is, the building side of that policy is if you took the building and turned it upside down and shook it, everything that stayed attached is part of the building. So that's paint, that's carpeting, uh, that's the roof, that's the plumbing, that's the electricity. All of that is building. The contents is what falls out. So that would include the furniture and all the collections and the shelving. So the shelving is restorable because it's metal. The furnishings, because they're upholstery and particle board wood, are not recoverable or restorable. They'll absorb water and they'll, uh, expand, so they will no longer be able to use, to be used. Unfortunately, the children's collection, all of it was underwater, because the water was up to thirty-two inches and the shelves are only thirty-six, so everything was below that thirty-two inch level. Um, and a significant portion of the adult collection was also submerged. Um, in the three days before we could start getting the mud out, the materials on the top shelves have also absorbed a lot of water. So we're currently, um, looking at what is possible to salvage those, but for the most part, we think they're absorbing water and they're beginning to mold soup. So that eighty-one thousand dollars that we have for content has to be used for the furnishings and the restoration of the collection. It will not do all of its job, so we'll have to, uh, rely on those grants and rely on those gifts from the community to help build that basic collection back up, uh, because any one year's worth of collection spending on a branch is not sufficient to have an opening day or a starting collection. Is that the question? So we'll have to continue to build, uh, the collections and things.
What about the end board pieces for the shelf?
The end panels, the end panels, they count as content. And, um, what we'll probably do is, you know, we had a lot of great local artists participate in the, um, original design when we, uh, renovated in two thousand and eight. We've saved most of that, and we'll find ways to bring those back as accents into the library. But we may have, because of our short number of dollars, what we'll most likely do is have a plainer end panel, something like a solid maple. It's a little cheaper, that doesn't rely on laminate as well as an underboard. It might be cheaper in the long run. And then we'll be adding furnishings. We'll have, we're prioritizing which furniture we purchase first so that we can open first. So the first thing we need to have is the paint on the walls, and then we need to have some sort of flooring. Luckily, those come out of the building side. The next step for us is going to be the circulation desk, or a service desk, so that we can serve people. Then the shelving, so that we have a place to store our materials. And then the computers, because the George's Creek and Westernport communities are heavy computer use compared to our other branches, so we want to make sure they exist, make sure those services are available. And then, if there's anything left, we'll look at things like the lounge furniture, the end tables, the big, uh, the meeting room tables in the big meeting rooms. We want to make sure that we can open as soon as we can functionally, and then we'll be continuing to add those, uh, nice elements as we, as we can and as funding and grants become available.
John, is there any question raised, but sure, about the structural integrity of the building itself?
The building was examined, uh, Wednesday morning. The flood was Tuesday. The building was examined and declared, uh, structurally sound to enter, at least, by the Howard County Search and Rescue Team. Now that the mud is gone, there is a dip in the concrete slab right along Main Street. Following the nineteen ninety-six flood, there was a similar dip in that slab in that very same location. That was remedied in two thousand and three by jackhammering up the concrete in the meeting room, filling that pit with gravel, and then repouring concrete. So it is possible, it is very possible, that the water running down Main Street also washed away what was underneath of that concrete slab. So what we're doing is our insurance adjuster has called in an engineer to evaluate that for us. So at this time, um, the building is safe to go in. We don't have a definitive answer on, uh, the dipping in the floor.
And that's not only in the meeting room, but also in the.
Correct.
Library.
In the, the adult section and the meeting room is where it dips down. Anything along Main Street is where you'll see the dip.
There's, um, comments and questions, party?
Party, okay.
First, he said, thanks to the notary leadership of the Board of Prestid, Mr. Tobe, and library leadership for making sure that the branch would stay open. And then his question, does the designation of the state of emergency create any opportunity for one-time funding to cover the extended?
I answer that based on your conversation with Jason Bennett.
I don't really have a good answer, but, um.
Maybe, and we're trying.
The governor did declare emergency, and Jason told me today, and he may have said something else boudily in their meeting, but, um, the governor is aware, obviously, aware of everything and is willing to do what he needs to do, but that will be all capital funding, and we're not sure when or how to get off that. So I don't think that answers the question, but it's a positive towards something.
We have been documenting everything so that we can submit a detailed list of what needs to be replaced and the mileage and all those things, so that we'll have a detailed accounting of that when it comes time to apply for that funding.
Is that funding, if it exists, or if it exists, come from the state or the federal?
The, our flood insurance program is through the Federal Flood Insurance Program, so it's run through a, a federal agency. Um, and then there, I believe somehow FEMA is involved, so that's why there was that article in the Baltimore Sun saying that it may not get to us, because of the FEMA money has been restricted by the current administration. Comments?
Yeah.
Or addition.
What do you call this first? Uh, do we have a list?
Thank you. Say, please keep in mind you have three minutes. You have two public comments. That section's, gonna make sure that everyone's heard. Louis Mokton?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Louis Mokton. I live in Front Row, Warren County, Virginia. I used to live in Fort Ashby, Virginia, and now I'm now at Penn and Bill Mall in the nineties. Uh, this treaty matters deeply. Matters deeply to somebody above. That's not near a deck. I appreciate the chance to speak with you. I serve as a trustee at large for Samens Public Library. I also serve on their strategic planning and also my laws committees. I've held public office, small business, and volunteered in just about every corner of my community, including, believe it or not, a total clown named Leonardo. Uh, I serve a rural community, about forty thousand, uh, hopefully five million budget. The county did pay, or used to pay about a million dollars a year. Uh, we're going through some issues right now with that. And I can identify what you're going on, because we have not funded for many years, and, uh, inflation has risen quite a bit. Kind of messed me up with, with the news, because, uh, I was still in the impression. I'm not here as a trustee today. I'm here as a brother. My sister is a patron of your libraries. Actually, she is here today, so I, you messed me up too. But her phone, her home also flooded recently. I reached out to her pastor over the weekend, but I, I, I reached out to him and over the weekend, I came up to help her in both her church, help deal with the damage. Devastating. My group was, was quarter. It, it was crazy. Uh, we talked, and, and she told me what's been happening with her library. Didn't know how to, how to, she was scared that it would scrape my clothes. Uh, two years ago, my library faces something similar. Their efforts to remove books about marginalized, marginalized communities, it was painful. But we relied on transparency. We listened, we talked, we stood by our mission, served everyone. That choice continued to be open and honest made the difference. We remain Virginia Library of the Year. We've been getting awards like crazy since then. Uh, but it couldn't happen without trust. Trust doesn't show up, it's filled, filled with meetings, clear policies, financial transparency, non-communication. Now surprised, been searching for answers about my sister's library. All I could find was an expense report that raised more questions. I couldn't find agenda packets, budgets, policies, pieces of statistics, or even details about annual fundraising events, so I didn't know what to tell her.
You're about three minutes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Jack, over.
Good afternoon, board. I'm President Tobe. Uh, as you had been mentioning the wall, I'm very happy to hear that all the libraries are going to remain in the big box, going to keep the communities alive. After losing one day, hard, or Jeff's, I do ask the board if they'll consider letting cutting out our Tuesday and Thursday, basically ten to six, to twelve to eight. Reason so, we steer many meetings into the library evening. We won't even be able to have our library board meetings there, but it's at six in the morning. And if we're shooting for getting numbers, it's important for available. So if you will take that into consideration, not tonight, but in the very near future, it'll help us. We did survive the flood. Unfortunately, the Westernport, their, it, their quits end, they're a strong team, we all are. They will survive. They work hard like we do. That afternoon, our library took a very strong beating. Water was approximately two foot deep against the front windows. Fortunately, the rocks did not damage the front windows.
That to build that building, but that's spectacular, the water got in.
We didn't get a drop of water through the building, even in the basement. The basement was concerning to me. I met with Mr. Tobe, said, let's go in the basement, let's look and see, because if he's pumped out, it has to happen now if we can get mold start. We did not. Um, we checked that evening with Regina, asked, let's go in and look, just to make sure. I have talked to my team that we are going to be cutting boards that fit those front windows. They'll be kept in the library.
Nice.
That at any time there's something crops up like that, put the boards in front of that window, because that would have been the worst thing that could have happened, is the front windows. That's what happened in previous town hall. It would survive, but the window got. So I think, um, preparation, also with the state and Senator Secretary, we are going to be putting back in place a task force team. So when things like this happen, it was a task force team in ninety-six, it had kind of got away from us. It needs to put back in, because you can't, there's not enough answers, too many disconnects to prevent it previous happen. So we'll work on that, we'll get the boards cut in place, and then you're okay with it, the board's good with it. Where we struck, we instruct Regina, where they need cap, how to push them in and get those windows protected. It may never happen again, but we can't forget. Once again, thank you for all your support. Um, many people, um, shame of commerce come out herself and deliver stuff to the county and the other areas. Means a lot to the people. Uh, it's unbelievable, unbelievable the amount of support we see, receive from Walmarts, big dog stores that are bringing truck trailers in. We still don't have a full service with our water. I have about forty homes that do not have water, because they don't have a water line to put it in. So the belt company was in today trying to get water line put back into those people, but just they know that it's the county, the people, everyone's working with them, and it'll happen. But thank you very much, and if you will consider that I already changed from twelve to eight, that will help us a lot so much.
Thank you. Regina, ma'am?
Hi, everybody. I'm Deena Ham. For those of you who don't know me, I've been here for a year, and I'm trying to, I'm scared to be, um, steering committee for. I have three things I want to say. One, to Jack is, I think, one day a week to have our library hours extended into an evening. I think that's great. A lot of people can't get there, even if it's five o'clock. Flood insurance absolutely has to remain, you know, it was funny, because we talked about that, right? In one of our past meetings, we've been talking about our flood insurance, and what should we do? Well, we got our answer. We keep our flood insurance. And if that means that we got to find people in the community, steering committee, um, well, Trish can talk, yes, about that, we're welcome to this degree. So our small communities, and I'm not exactly sure where Jack is and the money they raise, so our small communities came together from all over the country and helped us raise this money. And that's, it, it was. And then, when we were talking about, how do we save these libraries, come to us, do you? Don't wait, because you've got these communities. We are short today, right? Because where is everybody, sleeping much, still, of all the things? You know, I went through the flood of eighty-five, flood of ninety-six, and now the flood twenty twenty-five, we're going to keep flood insurance. Um, I'm so grateful. Thank you so much. It, it's just emotional to see what's happened, and I've met wonderful people and made wonderful friendships. So in the future, we have to break right. And I have one question for you, John. I was talking with Commissioner Bill Erickson, Bill Erickson brings the police not too long back. One of the things I said is about the current, why, why don't we have a grant writer? Or what can we do? And he said, we have a grant writer. The county has a grant writer. What are you talking about? He said, you don't have to write the grant. He said, you have to find a grant, and the county, that grant writer will write the grant. Is, is that your understanding?
I will investigate. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, those are the words I said several times back to him. Why, why, why? Because I certainly. Because I certainly had no purpose. So that's all we need to do is find grants. Shoot, we can find grants. And if that's what we have to do, is take them to the county commissioners. And if you need help with that, because you're smiling, if you need help with that, you know, I have no problem saying anything. You know, we need to be grant writing all the time, and we need to be fundraising all the time, and we've got people here that will back up and help us with whatever we need to do, is huge responsibility. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Trish Morgan?
May I move on to the second session?
Yes. Carrie Michelle Michael?
Well, hello. As she said, I'm Carrie Michael. And first of all, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you. A thank you to Mr. Tobin and the members of the advisory committee. Thank you for your time, your attention, and for hearing our voices so far, and for many of us who have spoken at these meetings, written letters, and offered our support in countless ways. We appreciate you working with us and listening to us. We're not finished yet, but what we have proven is that our communities are strong. We care deeply about our libraries, and we are willing to put in the work to keep them open, thriving, serving the public with even greater locally access and hours. We will work with you. I understand, I was a little left way out, wasn't expecting quite what I've seen tonight. But we are here, and we're not going anywhere. We want to work together for the success of all of our libraries and all of our communities. I do have just one question arising from the documents that were passed out this evening. And I'm not trying to be a downer, I am grateful for everything. I guess my only question is that I only saw that one branch has three consecutive days that are staying, were staying open until 8:00 P.M. And I was just wondering as to why that is. If you could explain that maybe later or something. And I wanted to say that while I am very grateful to have Westernport, Georgia Creek and Washington Street branches were being opened, we're still receiving the lowest number of service hours with the latest evening hours at Westernport being 6:00 P.M. one evening. I just, I respectfully, I understand you're working on our issues and doing apparently all that you can. I just respectfully ask that this issue be given more consideration, if we can possibly work with one evening of later hours or something, because we're still losing a day of access. But next, and most importantly, I want to thank every single person, every single person who has contributed to this effort to save our libraries. You know who you are. And if you're in this room tonight, please stand up. Let's give ourselves a round of applause. Come on, people, stand up. Thank you, thank you, thank you to you all. We want to thank our volunteers, our donors, our letter breakers, the friends of the library group members, and every advocate who has stepped up in big and small ways. Your efforts matter, we're seen and deeply appreciated, and that has helped us tremendously in working with you all to get our voices heard and you to help us. It is a collaborative commitment that we're trying to make. And as a member of the Save the Westernport Library Steering Committee, I hope that I speak for all of us, I know that I do, that we want to acknowledge our many supporters that couldn't be here tonight too. The ones who continue to show up for our fundraisers, who amplify our message on social media, and who come up with creative ways to help, just go out and make things happen. I am personally very incredibly grateful. And I say that from the depths of my heart. Our heart is very, very important to me. Finally, as we move forward, I ask that you keep communication wide open. Our communities have shown that we're ready to roll up our sleeves, but we need to be kept informed. Let's not wait until challenges feel overwhelming. Let's work together proactively. We are here, we are engaged, and we are committed to supporting our libraries for the long haul. Thank you.
Mary Ann Morris?
I'd also like to thank you for what you've done and the changes, cutbacks you've made. But I also have some other suggestions. I don't know a lot about how marketing could be changed or finances could be changed, but I was, am rather struck by storytime. And by looking at it, I guess especially as a former teacher, I see this as one lesson plan will be, because they're obviously all at the same time. They're all at 10:30, so they cut across ages. So I can see that as one person preparing one, but the way it is written now, unscheduled, on some days it takes two people to do it, some days it takes three. But that could be changed. If, for example, and I just sketched something out, Tuesday could be the veil of 10:30, South of Wunder. Wednesday, Frostburg at 10:30, Washington at 1:30, Thursday, Westernport at 10:30, Georgia Creek at 1:30, and I'm using the old times. So, but that would still work with the new times. So that could be one person in their full-time work week doing storytime, and also that's only three days, so having two other days a week to do whatever other duties. So in the future, I don't know, through attrition or other kind of changes, that changes, more changes could be made other than at the branches. And I also will give a plug for keeping Westernport open later in the evening, because I personally have to go to a book club that is in the evenings, on Tuesday evenings. And I've been to a couple of author talks that have been in the evenings. And we really would cut down the time that people can come and enjoy especially special programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I'm talking to you.
Yes, sorry. I was going to try.
Right, I'm going to talk to you. First of all, very nice to thank you all for working and your time and all the people I thank you. This is painful, I don't enjoy getting into public speaking, so this is something speaking from my heart and my passion here. I've been working with the friends of Westernport, got to meet the good people in George Creek Library, as you know. If you saw the passion they have, even before the flood, you know, doing fundraisers, getting their hands in cinnamon, messy cinnamon doing for a fundraiser, they just, you cannot leave the time out of passions, people. Correct, Frostburg, along the library, active in the Frostburg library. But I see the passion, I see the need for the people in these communities to have this. I see the importance. I talked to Trish, I talked to Carrie, I talked to Mary Ann, I talked to Gina, they've become my friends, Dr. Getty, they are now my friends, and I love to support them prior to flood. So why do libraries matter in your 2025? I guess it's a question to ask, okay? So I'm going to go back to 1978, go back to a simpler time here. I was six years old, my mother was making $5,300, which with inflation equals about $26,000 now below the pocket. I was going to Westside School. If you're under the age of 50, you probably don't remember, come to Louisiana, really prosperous place, and Westside was the most prosperous part of the town. We couldn't afford, we couldn't afford going to baseball games. Sorry, I got a question. We couldn't afford to go to amusement parks. If I had to go to report in school, my classmates, who were a lot from a lot more of school families, were able to access things that I couldn't access. We had one then, we had the Washington Street Library, and we walked there twice a week, and we would get books. And it gave kids like my brother and my son a chance to compete, and don't get in their home. Understand this, when the kids walk into school, it's a competition. They are competing against their classmates. Even at that point, they're competing, where you're going to be in life. The library system gave me and my brother a chance to compete. Now, I'm going to read something, and I don't like to talk about myself, I don't like to talk about my writing career, but I've been published several times, okay? So the first time I was published, they needed an author by. So I go by Marianne Bryan Michael, I don't think my father deserves recognition for his last name, so I go by Bryan Michael. My mom deserves all the credit. So Bryan Michael's passion for was nurtured at the Allegheny County Public Library System. Despite possessing limited financial means, Brian's mother managed to find both the time and the resources to enable bi-weekly visits. Brian feels that reading successfully in life translates into greater success later in life. And that's how I feel, and that was the first time I was published, and they asked me what I wanted for life, that's why I wanted, that's why libraries matter. Thank you very much for the board, or thank you for doing what you did. All of you people in your group have been so active and trying to save these libraries. Thank you all very much, it's valued and it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Brenneman?
I also want to thank everyone for all of their hard work. This has been a long, hard battle, and I know the challenges were difficult. Bill, I especially want to thank you for your comments opening the meeting, we appreciate that very much. It was a hard hit for Westernport, we've been there before, we've had hard hits before, and we are willing to stand up and fight, and you've seen that. You know, not to be a downer, but I do want to pick up on something that Carrie mentioned. A four-day cut to a three-day cut is a 25% cut in services. A seven-day cut to a six-day week is more like a 15% cut. So we are still taking a hard hit, but we are appreciative that we're open, we're appreciative that there is insurance to build back what was recently destroyed. And to echo everyone else's comments, we are willing to work and to continue to keep our library open and to keep it there for the people who need it. I also want to describe how much we appreciate the local people working in our local branches, the librarians, I consider our local heroes. They're out there on the ground floor with our children, with our elderly. If you need something, they're going to find it for you. And I know they have been in fear of their jobs if their library was one that was mentioned for a possible closure. These people have been valiant in supporting the library. And I just want to make sure that everybody recognizes that fact. They have not been noble, because, you know, under the circumstances, they felt that they couldn't and shouldn't. However, we do support them very, very highly, and the community has come to me, and I'm sure they've come to everyone else, to tell us how much these people have been appreciated through all of this. And it was very important to the local people that everyone recognized what wonderful people we have, how talented, how knowledgeable, and we would not ever want to see any of them, you know, without a job. We really love our local librarians. Other than that, I think that was everything that I had to say, just thank you for what you've done, we appreciate it. Please, we don't want to be back here again next year. Mary Ann said it, keep in contact. Deena said it, keep in contact. We don't want to do this again. We just want to work together and keep services at a level that we can afford for everyone who needs it. Thank you.
Charles Schachne?
Good afternoon, everyone. Last Tuesday morning, as I normally do, I came down to Hill of Westernport, my cross Range Street, I always pass the library building, I said, I could go up there, right to my swamp in North County. Six hours later, I came back to a completely different scene. There was six feet of water. After it left, there was another two feet of blood in places. On Wednesday morning, I volunteered, I was helping deliver supply, John was there. When the governor came, you were there and you put a face. I want to thank you for putting a face on what we've lost. There were other organizations there that were not represented. They kind of toned it in, unfortunately, they're considered to start. This isn't over. If you've gone through budget cycles before, it's a circle. But we will be back here again, unfortunately, I will be a downer. We're going to be back here again, but it's going to take all of us not to get to where we were before, looking at, we want to cut off the line, we're going to close branches. This hurts. I know this hurts, it's painful, but sometimes we all have a share of pain, we're all going to share in the wealth later and be able to go back to having libraries open six, seven days a week, as long as we're working together. I thank you for the communication that's gone out, this is where we are. There were people Tuesday night saying, what can we do to get the library back up? I know you had to board it up because people were down, can we get in, can we get in, can we do? There have been people reaching out to other organizations about getting donations and supplies, and so working as a team, keeping that communication open, staying open in that communication that there's weekly, this is where we are. I was so happy to read when Georgia's Creek is open today, after all that, after our solemn pictures of the water creeping up against the building, I expected the building to be pushed out of the way. And seeing what I, when I was able to drive past the Westernport branch and seeing the furniture had been pushed out the door, I thought, we're not going to make it. But that's not the library. This is the library, the people, all of us, for just keeping and working together. This is not going to end, we got to keep working out, keep checking out. What can we do, what fundraising? Thank you.
Reverend Justin Searls?
I defer to the second.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, comments?
Yeah, we have one from Ally, Ally, if you could unmute.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes. I just had two quick questions. I wanted to ask if there was a particular reason that the Washington Street Library was not going to get a weekend day open? And I also wanted to ask with the change in service hours from seven hours to eight for most libraries, if that was going to result in a change for the typical hours worked in a week for a full-time employee? And if so, what that might look like?
I can, sure. The number of hours per week for library employees will remain at 35. The way it will work is they typically work either a Monday through Friday schedule, seven-hour days, or they work a Monday through Thursday, at Friday off and work Saturday. And that's how our staff stagger, open Fridays and Saturdays. So with the schedule that was presented today, staff will be reporting to the branches on Mondays when we're closed to the public, and that will allow them to do their behind-the-scenes work without having to take away from their customer service focus. So on the Mondays, they'll be open, staff will be working four hours, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, eight hours each, so that's 24 plus four is 28. And either the Friday or the Saturday for seven hours, seven plus 28 would bring them back to the 35, so that's how that one will go.
I think her second question was, why wasn't Washington Street getting a other?
Um, they currently do not have a weekend, so it was not contemplated in removing a day to switch it. Made more budgetary sense to use the same staff at the George Creek and Westernport Library rather than the Washington Street Library.
One more comment from Hardy.
Better timer.
Oh, just that Renee is a super talented, ex the Aladosh's chair, he didn't want to be down.
Hardy has to say something all the time. But it, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so we.
So if I had my brothers, I would like a motion to approve the budget of the schedule as presented, but that would be the next thing.
I shall move.
I shall move.
At him? Hearing none, how many are opposed? Two portions or all?
Motion dies from a lack of a second.
Yep.
All right.
Down to board member?
Sure.
Board member interview committee. We have, thank everyone who was nominated and went through the process. We have two recommendations, Megan Murphy and Rosa Garcia. That will go to the county next. Is there a motion to nominate those two to go to the county? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Renee, excuse me. I didn't understand the motion there. The budget is not through. I didn't see.
No.
But it's not motioned into.
Correct. Fundraising program update?
Oh, okay. Just an update. We are, regardless of who we apply to, who applies, whether we send it through the county or whether we write the grant ourselves, we needed to have a viable project. So, right now, we are looking at the, the project would be to create some sort of drop-in after-school homework help center at our various libraries with the idea that we would provide an after-school program as well as academic support. So, that is what we're looking at. And of course, as of last Tuesday, we're also going to be looking at grant opportunities to expand the activities and the answer the needs of the Westernport Library. So, those are our two areas of focus that we'll be applying for grants and projects related to them.
Leadership team updates? No. Okay. New business?
We can talk about the flood, but give everybody an update. So, as we know, on Tuesday, May 13th, both George's Creek and Westport libraries were subjected to flooding due to the sudden rainstorms. On checking the following morning, George's Creek did not suffer any significant damage or flooding to the interior. The exterior was strewn with debris, which has since been cleaned up, thankfully, to the town volunteers. Unfortunately, the Westernport Library suffered significant flooding with water levels up to 32 inches inside the building. So, we were in contact with our federal flood insurer, as well as multiple restoration companies. Our $21,000 annual premium provides coverage of up to half a million dollars on the building and $81,000 for the contents. As I said, both the contents includes furniture and collections. But we've selected BMS CAP to restore the property, and they began work on Friday the 16th. The insurance adjuster visited on Saturday the 17th and agreed with the steps that we're undertaking at this point. The entire children's collection will need to be replaced because they were all underwater and a large portion of the adult collections as well. End panels, upholstered furniture, and particle board furnishings were also destroyed. We've begun working on replacement costs and prioritizing the work to be done and the furnishings to be replaced first. As far as the collection, we're also looking at pulling from other branches to supplement the collection because we know that $81,000 won't go so far. We'll also be applying for grants and looking at various foundations to help us with the collections and furniture as well. That's where we are with the Westernport Library.
Hey, is it appropriate to provide some clarification on why we do not?
We're going to give clarification as to why we have not approved the motion.
Overall, we are all in support of what was presented, but I think I would like to take into account some of the comments regarding the hours. I think that maybe adding some, take some away to help provide some of those evenings, maybe. I'd like to explore an opportunity to bring in some type of volunteer program that could open that up as an option. But there are also some, I guess, internal conversations that the board needs to have regarding the portions of the budget. So, until we do that, majority of the board is not comfortable saying what was granted. However, I feel safe saying to you that what we will pass will keep every library open.
That's what about?
So, please don't leave here this evening with the concern that we're going back to try to cut more hours or closing pre-nature, do anything like that. This is strictly conversations that need to happen. Do you have plans to make a motion tonight involving all of the libraries open?
We can make that motions, but as far as budget is concerned, we can't make that motion.
So, you won't make that motion?
We will make a motion to keep all the libraries open. There is without a doubt, every one of the board members would not be in favor of closing any branches. We've worked very hard to work this budget out to try to take into account of everything everyone has said, including the advisory committees and every email, phone call, text message that each one of us has received. We've taken them very seriously, and we will not approve anything that has to do with closing a branch.
Do you make a motion? I think for a motion tonight, I don't understand your V S reason. And what I'm saying is, you can still make a motion to keep all the libraries open for this next budget period, but still continue to work on your budget.
And that's what I said, is we have, we can make a motion to keep every library open.
So, will you do that tonight? I make a motion, keep every library open.
And? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Remember, we are.
Renee?
We are going to put the library.
Misses?
As far as the library's favor.
Yeah, I would say that I've been toning up how many children are in the greater Westernport area, which goes down to the Rawlings. I come up with 517 plus the homeschoolers, and let's just say 600. Everybody has stood up here and said, "Let's work together." Sadly, and I can say this because I'm older, there aren't as many young people in the audience last year and year before, and if it hadn't flooded, I would have been taking three grade levels to the Westernport Library to get them in the door in the hopes they would come back. I surveyed the kids who went last year. I've been surveying the kids who were at sixth grade because they had gone on. I surveyed 80 kids, and only half of them had been back in the door. And I asked them why, and they said, "We don't have enough time. We were so busy with sports." I think we all, including me, I would have had those kids there this week if it hadn't flooded. And I'm beyond grateful that my library is still standing. But we need to make a concentrated effort to get your kids, your grandkids, your neighbors' kids in the door. And because it's a great space. And I know a lot of the kids who go, they'll say to me, "I did this at the library, but we need to have more." And there's only so much I can do as a local elementary school librarian. I don't live in Westernport, even though my park is definitely. Please, get the kids in the door because they are the future. Everybody in the room will continue to go to the library, me too, but get them in the door. It would be such help to get them in the door. Get every library in helping. And I'll get off my soapbox.
All right, we're going to go to public comment two.
Sorry. Sorry. There's some comments from Hardy.
Go ahead. Down three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and for standing with us during one of the most challenging chapters in the life of our library system. As a trustee of the board, I speak tonight not only as steward of this institution, but also as a committed member of this community. We've all felt the weight of recent budget crisis, and while we are grateful that our library branches remain open, keeping the doors open was essential, but now the real work begins. We must take the lessons of this crisis and use them to guide a strategic path forward, unrooted in transparency, accountability, and partnership. This means communication between the board of trustees, the executive director, and most importantly, you, the people we serve. Your voice matters. We need to hear from you, and you need to know that we are listening. We won't be able to fix everything overnight, especially in a difficult time, but we can commit to a, to progress, one discussion at a time. Since the day I became a trustee, I'm taking that responsibility seriously. It has always been and continues to be my job to serve each of you. And I can say with confidence that this commitment is shared by every member of our board. We are united in our belief that the library must emerge from the moment, not just intact, but stronger, more accessible, and more responsive to the needs of the county. The road ahead will require partnership. It will require patience, but most of all, it will require belief in the value of public libraries and in each other. Let us walk this path together, not just to preserve what we have, but to build something better. Thank you for your support and your continued faith and hope.
Chris Morgan?
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very much for hearing us speak tonight. It's very nice of you to hear what we have to say, listen to what we have to say, and take it all in, and we work together. Now, speaking about what Debbie mentioned, getting the kids in the library, I want to tell you all that on June the 5th, Save the Westernport Library is having an event called Libraries Are Magic, and we are inviting all Westernport Elementary kids to come to the event. It's at Bruce Outreach in Westernport, and everything will be free for them. We have sponsorship to cover our expenses. We're going to have all kinds of things, mule rides, and fairies, and bubbles, and Mr. Toad is going to be there. Oh gee, I don't even know. Just lots of other activities that we have arranged for a four-hour period for those kids. And what we're doing is trying to accomplish something in our small town of Westernport, and that's to bring these children together, like Debbie said. Let them know about our library services. They'll all be taking home a goodie bag. So, we're going to include something in there about the library and inviting them to come back, of course, and just familiarizing them with the services that the library has to open. So, we're excited about that. So, that's June 5th. Now, on a more serious tone, I have to say that I personally am not happy with the hours for Westernport Library. And I know we have some time coming up that we can address that. But I'll be fighting tooth and nail to get those hours increased at our library and using volunteers, like Julie said. Get a volunteer program. You can still have your librarians there, but if you add those days so we can have access to what we have in our community, and every library deserves that. So, if we can get a volunteer program, get a volunteer coordinator within your hierarchy and have someone pull together a program where they can be educated and trained, and then they can serve as volunteers along with the library staff that's paid. And we can have more hours at all of our libraries. We all want that, but we all can't get it right now. But we can talk about it, and we can hear what each other has to say. Personally, I don't know how that was chosen. I don't know if this board chose that or John did all the work. I see, I have a concern still with John, that it seems like he waits till the last minute, crisis management. For example, the insurance for all the employees. Oh, he waits till it's almost expired. Now, oops, he's trying to find coverage elsewhere. That's crisis management. I'd like to see John take more outreach in his timeline to do things ahead of time, just like we at the town of Westernport. We didn't know about all this closure business until February. Why didn't we know about it? Well, sort of buy it. So, we came in at Save the Westernport Library. We got incorporated. We got nonprofit status. We raised almost $50,000 in three months, when John could have raised $50,000 in three months. Why wasn't John out there contacting the county commissioners for grant opportunities? Why wasn't John having his leadership team do fundraisers? And they could have had cinnamon roll, chili dog sales. They could have had raffles. They could have had spirit nights all over the county and raised that $50,000.
Sure. Three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for your time, and thank all of you too.
Reverend Justin Searls?
The library board, everybody who's here representing our community tonight. Thank you for your grace in welcoming me and all caring what I have to say. I just wanted to share one verse of scripture from the book of Proverbs, chapter 18, verse 15. "The mind of the discerning requires knowledge, and the error of the wise seeks it." I believe that particular proverb sums up the grand purpose of our library system, not just here, but everywhere. And I, I have just been thrilled just to see how our communities have come together to unite. And we, at this level, we've seen a sort of revival of democracy and action. People say that the United States isn't a democracy, but they don't tend to look on the local level too much because that's where some of the greatest action takes place. And with all of our libraries staying open, I am overjoyed at hearing that. But as far as to how we go forward with that, that's a bigger question. I'd like to cite one example from my studies for my master's program in history. Just graduated last week. One long, hard-fought year, but in my history studies, I learned of one example in Canada of a premier of Saskatchewan by the name of Tommy Douglas. He was pretty much the perennial godfather of what would become Canada's universal healthcare system. Now, one of the practical mechanisms of how that system was implemented at the grassroots level, more or less at the level of a province, was that all of the government officials in the state voluntarily took a pay cut. One thing I would like to propose, maybe in extending the hours of our library system, is maybe perhaps with the, some would say bloated administrative costs, perhaps maybe the members of the board could voluntarily take a temporary reduction in pay of maybe 3% or something of that sort.
Members?
We don't get paid.
They're not paying?
No.
My apologies. I'm sorry. Now, perhaps to rephrase that, I would like to propose that maybe some cuts could be made to the administrative budget. As to what's encompassed in that, I don't know. But I'd like to conclude with what the Westernport Library means to me. Across our library system, I look for platforms to talk about my book that got published. And the Westernport Library was the only one that opened their arms to me. And as a matter of fact, they treat us all as members of the family. And the thing that we need to remember is that we are a family. We're a community that needs to work together. When we become too hyper-focused on individualistic pretenses, we can lose sight of the greater good. And I believe going forward, we have a grand opportunity. And I believe going forward, we have a grand opportunity to continue the trajectory that we're on, not only in keeping our libraries open, but in extending the hours and just looking to make cuts where cuts can legitimately be made, particularly with administrative costs, at least in my opinion. But I thank you for hearing what I have to say. The spirit of God spawned today with a sound mind. Thank you.
We have the business to be voted on.
We're going to go into closed session.
Okay. I have another meeting. Thank you.
Right, so we'll need a motion, one of the board members, to enter into closed session. For the purposes of? Then we'll need a motion. Follow to go into closed session?
Jeez, I can't even see.
All right. Thank you all for coming.